Hi Todd.
Oh hi Isaac, glad you made it on. I can hear you.
Cool.
And I'm gonna be playing, I'm gonna be running the slides for your presentation for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you want me, I can, if I can share the screen, I can do it, whatever works better.
Probably easiest if you, if you wanted to share a screen and if that doesn't work out, I can pull it up too.
No, I'll share the screen.
Okay.
Hey everybody.
Okay, we are live on Facebook at the moment. Chris should be joining us here. He texted me moments ago, so he should be here in a second. Scott Adrian, I still don't show Joe on either panelist or attendee's side, just so you know.
Yeah, he said he would be calling in about five, probably at six o'clock, I guess.
Okay, well, I'll keep an eye on it. We do, we have a couple items, including public comments prior to Joe's presentation, so I think we'll, there'll be a little bit of time there. Okay, I'm gonna go to share screen on my side. And we'll get started in just a couple minutes. Oh there, I see Chris is on. Hey Chris. Making us nervous there a little bit.
Sorry about that.
Okay, and I see Bill's joining us too. We are live, we are live on Facebook. And we're in broadcast mode already.
Ted, can you shrink so I can look at my agenda?
What?
How do I get to my? Can you shrink this?
You are able, you are able to go to making it not full screen.
Where is that?
Just press escape.
Upper right hand corner. Exit, full screen.
Erin got it for me, we're all good.
Okay. It is six o'clock. Would you like me to get rolling? Chris, I do think you have board members here that you're expecting.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Hi everyone, this is Todd Schmidt, the village administrator, just gonna go through a few basic details as usual. For those who are attending from the public, a few things, attendees are muted and only the host, that's me, can unmute you, and there will be a chance to do that during public comment this evening. For those participating on the computer, you can raise your hand in Zoom, and if you're participating by phone, dial star nine will also raise your hand, I can see that, and then the order that those hands are raised is the order that we bring them in for public comments. There is a closed session this evening, that's expected. The way that's gonna work is that this meeting, the Zoom meeting, will remain active while the board members will mute their audio and their video, and then they'll be participating in our closed session by a separate conference call, so that's how that will work. I don't know how long we'll be in closed session, but there'll be a white screen up indicating that we're in closed session, we'll return to open when complete. I will mention though, that we don't expect action out of closed session this evening, whether that has a bearing on your decision to stay with the meeting, that's up to you. So for our board members and presenters, if possible, keep your audio muted when not speaking, board members should always keep their video on, others who are presenting as part of the meeting should remain audio and video muted until it's your time to present. When board discussion occurs, village president will call in members individually, however, Chris, I guess we've been doing this for a while now, and I just wonder whether people are getting the, getting the, getting used to the notion of maybe putting their hand up if they have a comment. Just worth questioning whether you still want to do the go, go around the room for everybody for every single item, but I'll leave that up to you to decide. All the votes will be done roll call, and that'll be done by deputy administrator Caitlin Steen, just remember to unmute when that comes up. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, village president, to call the meeting's order.
Thanks Ted, okay, I'll call the meeting for July 16, 2020, to order roll call please.
Nyla Frye?
Here.
Gary Hertzberg?
Here.
Erin Moran?
Here.
Bill Rannam?
Here.
Kristen Rungy?
Here.
Bill Willams?
Here.
Chris Zellner?
Here.
Everyone's here.
Thank you. First item we have for is our confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, and online availability. Caitlin?
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wannakee Tribune on July 2nd. The final agenda was posted at all three village posting locations on July 2nd, and the agenda and packet remained available online on July 2nd.
Thanks Caitlin. Next item we have is our consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled, or I'd look for a motion?
I'd move to approve the consent agenda.
Gary Hertzberg was the motion, I think Nyla was the second. Her picture came up as the person on screen, so I'm gonna go as she was the second. Any other comments? And I'll say we're gonna go with Todd, so if you raise your hand, I'll have you have a comment to tell you. If you don't, then I'll assume you don't. So any other comments? Okay, roll call Caitlin?
Nyla Frye?
Hi.
Kristen Rungy?
Hi.
Bill Rannam?
Hi.
Chris Zellner?
Hi.
Bill Willams?
Hi.
Erin Moran?
Hi.
Gary Hertzberg?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, so we have an item under new business tonight, which I proposed a little bit to you guys the last meeting, which is discuss and take action on proposed changes to public comment procedures. I'm just gonna read this off and ask if you guys have any questions or comments, and then if you guys are good with it, then I'd look to, I'll be probably making the motion for this this evening, and if we're, if we get a second, we'll go from there. So the change in public comment section for village meetings changed from items not on the agenda with one minute time limit to items both on and off the agenda with a two minute total time limit. Board members will not address the speaker for on or off the agenda items during the public comment section. Staff can still answer questions as necessary. Board members may choose to answer or respond to any public comments for items on the agenda when the board takes up the items on the agenda. Members of the audience will not be allowed to speak on items that are not listed as public hearings after public comment. However, if a board member would like clarification from a speaker in the public comment section, the board president can allow this occurrence during the meeting. Couple of clarifications within that too. For public hearing items, if it's a public hearing item, we won't have any public comments during that. So it would have to be during the public hearing section, not during public comment. And then if a member of the public comments during public comment on an item already on the agenda, and then when the agenda item comes up for a board member asks members of the public to clarify their comment, that does not then reopen the matter for further comments from other members of the public as well. So it'd be just during that individual that we'd be addressing. So before I make a motion, is there any comments or questions or anything? If you have questions, raise your hand please. Or comments. Gary Hertzberg?
Just, just applies to the village board meeting at this time? Not the other many meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
I would, I would add that I think as far as the other committees go, the committee chairs can certainly consider this as an approach worth considering, so there is nothing prohibiting that from the approach taken in other committees.
Okay, any other questions with hands? I can't see Nyla, so that's one problem I have with doing this the way this is done.
Yes, Nyla's hand is up, so I didn't realize you couldn't see her, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead Nyla.
Okay, I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I think this will be a very positive move to get as much citizen input as we can, and I think the two minute time limit will make it more doable. I've been the person at the end of trying to get communication through within one minute, and it is very difficult, so I think the two minutes will be much easier to work with.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Phil, I can't see Phil either, so.
Chris, quick question, do you, are you showing grid of speakers or just the person speaking?
The person that's speaking is coming up in front and big, and then I'm seeing, I can see four people up at the top.
Okay, I think what would be best if you switch to grid view, that will solve this for you. Top right of the black portion of your screen.
I got it, perfect, okay, I got it, thank you. Phil, do you have any comments? I'm sorry if you had your hand up or not.
I did not, I think this is very positive, from what I've heard from citizens at meetings and et cetera, they would appreciate it.
Okay, then I'm gonna make the motion to approve the change for our public comment section of the agenda to allow for two minutes that people can talk either on or off the agenda items.
I would second.
Second by Phil Willams. Any other comments? Raise your hand. Okay, roll call Caitlin?
Gary Hertzberg?
Hi.
Nyla Frye?
Hi.
Kristen Rungy?
Hi.
Bill Rannam?
Hi.
Chris Zellner?
Hi.
Bill Willams?
Hi.
Erin Moran?
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, so in consulting with Brian, our attorney today, in regards to this, we can apply this to our public comment section right now, even though the agenda says for items not on the agenda, we're just gonna open it up. Because we've passed this, we can do that now for anybody who has a public comment that would like to address the board this evening. Todd, do we have any hands up?
Now would be the time, I see three people, although I think one of them is our county executive, let me find out. So I'm gonna bring in a phone with 228 at the start.
Hey, yes, this is, this is Joe, thank you, I have, I'm having internet trouble and couldn't get on the Zoom meetings, I had to call in.
All right, I'm gonna send you back out and then promote you up to panelist, and then you'll be able to chime in when your time comes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Joe. Besides that, there's two other individuals on as an attendee, if you could raise your hand and we'll bring you in.
If they have comments.
Correct. And Joe, it looks like I won't bring you in as panelist, it's not gonna let me do that by phone, but I will allow you to talk when your item comes up.
Okay, so hearing no public comments or seeing no hands, I'm gonna move on with our agenda. We have a presentation for COVID-19 update and presentation from Dane County Executive Joe Parisi.
Do you have a preference on what we do first, Chris?
Why don't, no, I think however you wanna approach this is fine.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, let me bring Joe in, as he may have some information related to COVID anyway. So you should be able to share with us, Joe, welcome to the meeting.
Hey, thank you very much, I appreciate it, and again, I'm sorry I couldn't get in by video, my internet came crashing down about an hour ago, and I'm just here on phone. So, yeah, so I thought it might be helpful, you know, for me to give kind of the quick overview of what the county's been doing, I know you're all aware of a lot of it, but maybe to put it all together, and then to be available if, if folks have any input they wanna share with me or questions, I'm happy to answer what I know off the top of my head, and if there are some things you would like me to look into that I don't know, I'm happy to go find that information out and get it back to you as quickly as possible. So, yeah, just let me know if I start taking up too much time, because I know you have a busy meeting. But just kind of the overview is, everyone is aware, you know, it seems like forever ago now, but, you know, when this first came down a few months ago, Dane County was one of the first in the nation to have a positive COVID test result. We were the 12th in the nation, we were the first in the state. And so the, the kind of silver lining to that for us was that we took into gear early on, and as you may remember, we even had some guidelines in place locally before the state did. So, you know, like, like, like Wannakee and other municipal governments, we had to quickly, you know, look out for the most vulnerable among us, figure out how to social distance and work from home and all of that good stuff. We activated the county emergency operations center, and ever since, over the past, it's been four months now, we've been coordinating with, with all of the local units of government on everything response related. We've done a number of things to try to help folks who have been hit the hardest by this from an economic standpoint. You know, when we shut down, we, we saw record numbers of unemployment compensation claims filed, I believe the last time I saw it, we were up to 37,000 countywide. So what we did is we wanted to look at the necessities, just basic survival necessities, we looked at food, shelter, et cetera. So early on, about a little over three months ago now, we partnered with Second Harvest Food Bank, and Dane County was the recipient of some federal cares dollars, and so we wanted to use those for the people who were most in need, so when we looked at the food situation, we were seeing, you know, unprecedented need and demand at food banks from folks, you know, folks who were vulnerable before, but some folks who had never been food insecure before because of all the layoffs. So we invested upfront initially $3 million into a partnership between Second Harvest and our local farmers and growers, because as you know, ironically, at about the same time people were, you know, in need of help with food, our farmers had many of their supply chains broken, and they were, they were dumping milk, and they were having trouble, you know, finding outlets for their, you know, meat, dairy, and produce. So we provide, we built a bridge between the two and provided a partnership so that our local farmers and growers are supplying the majority of the food purchased with our CARES Act dollars. And as we suspected, in the first three months, we went through that $3 million without a problem due to the increased demand and the need out there, and so we recently renewed that partnership for an additional three months with another $3 million. And that'll work out well for our growers also, because, you know, the first three months, this started pretty early on in the season, so, you know, meat, dairy, and some of the early produce that worked well for, but a lot of our growers, our vegetable growers, et cetera, you know, their crops are beginning to be ripe now and will be over the next, you know, few months, so that will again, give market to our local growers while feeding a pretty, a pretty crucial need. We've also rented cold storage space that Second Harvest is using, because they, we needed storage space for a lot of that, that local food, and we've also are partnering with an organization called Badger Prairie Needs Network out near Verona to build them additional storage capacity to, so they can work in partnership with other food banks. Then we looked at the economics of things, and it's, it's no secret that our small businesses were and are getting hit tremendously from this, so we put together a $10 million local small business relief effort, and we, we partnered with an organization called Dane by Local to give grants to, to local businesses, and we've, we're just about through that $10 million there, we were looking to do, do whatever we can to throw a lifeline to help people survive and do what they need to do in order to make it through the worst of this. And so we've, so we have the food, we have the small business, and then another piece of the, the challenge that was brought to our attention very early by businesses was the need for childcare. And so there is a, there's a very big concern nationwide that childcare centers are going to go out of business during this crisis. There was one national survey early on that estimated up to half of them might do so. So we were determined not to let that happen in Dane County, so we entered into a three and a half million dollar partnership with an organization called Community Coordinated Childcare to give a grant to every single licensed childcare provider in Dane County, and that number's about 500 of them. And those grants will range from between $1,400 and $15,000, depending on the size. And really, the only qualification to get that money is you have to be a licensed childcare provider. Because again, we wanna do everything we can to help those folks survive during this time, so that when we can start things up again, you know, to a greater extent that those childcare providers still exist. Another piece of the pie is eviction prevention. We know that early on, there was an eviction moratorium, but that has expired, and we, we, so we saw that coming obviously, and entered into a $10 million partnership with the Tenant Resource Center to work with tenants and landlords to help stave off evictions. And what happens is people will call and apply, and the Tenant Resource Center will work with them and make a direct payment to the, to the landlord, arrange it, you know, and get an arrangement so that they won't be evicted. That way, people get to stay in their, in their apartments and in their homes, the landlords are able to make their mortgage, because obviously often their mortgage payments are based on the rent that they bring in. So, you know, what we're trying to do is the county often is basically the social safety net of the community, we're trying to look at the folks who are most vulnerable and use what resources we have to help them get through the worst of this. Like everyone else, county government's taking quite a, you know, an economic hit from this, we've had to furlough 20 people from the Illion Energy Center, which is basically shut down now other than for relief efforts, as you probably know, the, the COVID testing that the National Guard is doing in public health is taking place at the Illion Energy Center. We're also letting Second Harvest utilize some space there for food distribution to their pantries. We estimate that county revenue, because a good part of our budget comes from the half cent sales, the half percent sales tax, this year, about 68 million of our half billion dollar operating budget is slated to come from sales tax, we estimate we'll take probably a 15 to 25 million dollar hit. So in addition to those layoffs, we've also instituted a hiring freeze, and we're kind of monitoring the numbers to see how things go that way. As everyone knows by now, you know, we were doing exceptionally well compared to the rest of the state and a lot of states as far as our COVID cases, when we were under our stay-at-home orders. After the state lift, the states went down in the court case, we instituted similar orders locally, and once we started to open up, we went to what we refer to as phase one, and we were fairly successful. We had phase one basically allowed 25% occupancy of businesses along with social distancing. It was after we went to phase two that we started running into challenges, when we went to the 50%. And what we're seeing from contact tracing, that's whenever there's a positive case, members of public health meet with that person and try to find out everyone and every place they've been, so that they can contact those folks to let them know they may have been exposed. What we found is, you know, we were in like a handful of cases a day, even once we ramped up testing, like a busy day was maybe 20 positive tests. Well, now we're seeing the last, you know, couple of weeks consistently over 100 positives a day. And the reason that that is such a challenge for us, and so, so concerning is in addition to the fact that that many people are, are positive from the virus, and it's not, and it's not due just to the increased testing, it's more people. It's that we start having capacity challenges, we have to be able to, you know, again, talk to each one of those people, contact, you know, trace all the people they've been, all the places they have been. We're constantly monitoring hospital capacity, because as you know, UW Hospital, for example, isn't just dependent on, its population doesn't just depend on what happened in Dane County, there are regional and even from other states, statewide facility, and so we're always concerned about capacity. And so now that we've been seeing these numbers and tracing them back, we found that most of them were occurring in bars. Half of them, half, about half the cases were Madison, half, you know, roughly gives 5, 10%, half outside of Madison. Of the cases in Madison, a good, a good half of those were from the campus area and campus bars. So public health determined that in order to try to get this under control again, unfortunately, we were gonna have to move back, which we announced a few days ago, well, actually, almost a week ago now, to the 25% number and bars only having carryout or outdoor service with social distancing. We realize that that continues to be, you know, create an economic hardship, but what we're facing, you know, unfortunately, we're, we're all tired of this, this pandemic and this virus and want it to go away, but it's no less dangerous, and in fact, there's a strain that's even more contagious than it was in March. And so we need, we, you know, public health determined they needed to lock it back down, we continue to do education, we continue to look at, at what's worked elsewhere, and we know that folks elsewhere, those who have been the most successful, shut down early, stayed closed long enough, used a, had a masking policy, and opened very slowly, and, you know, for example, our neighbors in Canada, obviously a much smaller country, but still a very large country, they're having about 50 positive cases a day nationwide, so they're having, we're having two or three times that just in Dane County. So unfortunately, we're back where we're at, and so part of what we are doing is trying to help people as hard as this is regain kind of that spirit where we were in March, when we realized we had to buckle down, we realized that as much as we wanted to go hang out with our friends and, and, and get some human contact, that that's still very dangerous, and we need to get this back under control, because the experts are telling us this isn't even the second wave, this is still part of the first wave. So that's where we are right now, there are active discussions about mandating a masking policy going on, I personally think that's a direction we need to go in, and we will continue to try to balance what we need to do for public health with, with trying to help people and trying to, to, to help people survive this economically. It's, it's a challenge, there's, there's no easy answer, there's a lot of pain in all of this for everyone, but there's, you know, no matter, no matter what we do and how much we want it not to be here, again, the virus is still here, so, you know, until we have a vaccine, there's not gonna really be a normal, so it's just incredibly important that we stick together and watch out for one another, and remember that, you know, our adversary here is the virus, and we have to come together as a community to continue to do everything possible to keep it too suppressive. So I think I'll stop there, and again, I'm happy to answer any questions or listen to any input, anything you guys wanna put on my radar or opinions you wanna share with me, so thank you again for the time.
So Joe, I'll, I'll start, this is Chris Zellner, I just call in, or just say thank you for, you know, joining us this evening and taking some time out of your schedule as well. I'll hold my questions until the rest of the board members have had their opportunity, so board members, do you have any questions, please raise your hand, and I'll call on you. Wow, no questions out of you? Oh, Gary Hertzberg, go ahead.
I'm just curious on the parks issue, I mean, I, I think most people understand the bars are, you know, that's a really tough thing to deal with right now. People wanna get outside and that limitation on parks. Hopefully that gets lifted sooner than later, because I think it would help get people outside.
So county parks are open. We, we just encourage people to, again, follow social distancing practices, and as long as they do, ours will be, remain open, there's certain activities that are not, but, you know, there, and I don't know if, you know, how that differs, that probably differs from the state and some municipalities, I think everyone does it a little different. But for the county parks, we, we remain open.
Todd, I saw that you had your hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks Joe for coming on. You, you brought up the topic of mandating masks, and I've, there's been some, we've had some comments from citizens shared with us at Village Hall, and I think Chris has received these too, maybe some other board members, that the village ought to take action on a mandate like that. I, I actually approached the village attorney who's on the call as well here today, and asked for his opinion on whether that's something we could do. I, I actually approached the village attorney who's on the call as well here today and asked for his opinion on whether that's something we could do. His opinion is that because in a health emergency here, Public Health of Madison and Dane County sort of ruled the day in that we, the village, don't have a public health department. So we then turn and we look to, to you and the county's health department on, on whether that mandate will be something that would impact us and our, our citizens here or be, be put into place here. I heard you say, I think, that you support the idea of mandating that, but it sounds like there's a lot of issues in the weeds that have to get figured out.
Yeah, I, we're very close and I, I would, I would, you know, keep, stay tuned within the next twenty-four hours. You will, you will hear more about this. I will tell you more, more, kind of the details that, that we've been looking at, working out. There are things like accessibility, right, to make sure that there are enough masks for everyone and that it's, you know, if someone can't afford them, that they're available. There are logistics in, in making masks available. There are questions around enforcement that, that need to be looked at. So accessibility, availability, enforcement, affordability. And then there have been concerns among, among people in communities of color about being worried about being racially profiled if, if they're wearing masks. So what we've done, you know, we've been having conversations with one enforcement and others to make sure that folks are sensitive to that issue too. So really, a lot of the discussion has been around some of those types of logistics. But unfortunately, I can't say what I'll be announcing, but like I said, within twenty-four hours, you will hear, you will be hearing more about this and you'll have a definitive answer to what's going to go on. And yes, our understanding too, that it's, it's the county who would, who would issue the order, the health department, and it would, it would be effective countywide.
Oh, thanks. I mean, it's quite a time to be governing. I know the weight is quite, the weight is quite heavy on certainly the county and, I mean, locally we feel it and you must feel even heavier weight with health department function. So I just want to say that I appreciate the, the work that you and your staff are doing.
Thank you. It's been interesting to say the least, that's for sure. You know, another thing I didn't mention is I think Todd and, and the president and President Delner having your email or did or will soon, I don't know if you've had a chance to check it, some, some instructions from my office, which information you probably know about already, but we wanted to make sure you were aware of it, about how the State's CARES Act money is going to, like how you qualify and apply for that. So we have that information in your, in your inboxes. So if you need any help, you know, feel free to utilize, great.
We do have that, yes. Phil, hand up. Go ahead, Phil.
Yeah, Joe, you're invited to come out Wednesday to our picnic. We're going to have a drive-by picnic and we'll start serving picnic lunches at eleven-thirty at our senior center. You've come to this in the past and had a smore with us, but it's going to be a little different. You can only stand around with a mask and gloves on and eat, eat out of your car.
I was going to ask, are you going to have drive-through smores? Well, thank you, I'll check my schedule, I appreciate it. Are you going to have drive-through smores?
No, no smores, we'll have an energy bar for you.
All right. Well, thank you, I'll check my schedule.
So I, I don't see any other hands up, Joe. My, I had a couple of questions. One was with regards to, and, and I know that's going to be a difficult decision with the mandate of masks. I've had both sides of the issue brought to my attention from residents and so that's, that's not going to be an easy one, I understand that. So that, I, I, I'm looking forward to seeing what you have to say. The other question I have is, is you brought up the bars, restaurants, the difficulties right now and that's where a lot of the cases are, are going to be spreading. And if, if, if things are made a little more difficult on those bars and restaurants, do you at the county level have anything you're planning to do to assist those businesses additionally right now?
You know, I think that, Chris, I think that'll all depend on if there's additional terrorist funding. Because most of what we've been able to do with our assistance programs have been through the allocation we got from the Federal CARES Act. And, you know, there's, there's talk about CARES three, we're monitoring that now. I sure hope there is because, you know, as we've seen, you know, it's, we were able to help folks for a few months, but this thing is stretching on and on. So yeah, I'm, I'm very sensitive to that need and, you know, I'll continue to work with our federal legislators and, you know, and, and because I know they're on board with this idea of trying to get more, more of that relief funding authorized. But I, at this point, I don't know where that's at DC-wise.
And are you, are you typically, and this is just, this is probably not the great question for you, but are you in contact with a lot of our surrounding counties when you're, when you're going through these decisions and making these decisions? Because that's, that's the one thing that, you know, we talk about is, is it a fair table that is being dealt with everyone? Our job is to keep people safe, I get that totally.
Yeah, yeah.
All of our neighbors are doing different things, it puts a strain on, on those particular businesses. And that's why I was asking that question for our.
No, that's, no, that's absolutely spot on. I mean, first, I, I, what I do is kind of on two levels. I'm, I'm constantly urging folks on the state level to please come back to the table and look at fashioning some, some statewide guidelines, right? Because the way this came down with that, you know, that, that going away as a result of a Supreme Court ruling, it, it wasn't, you know, most of us expected that if the court ruled against the statewide guidelines, that they would throw it back to the governor and legislature and say, come up with a plan together. But instead, they threw out the whole thing and overnight, it was over. So what, what we did in response to that, now the, the second part of the question, is we reached out to all of our surrounding counties and attempted to do similar orders with them. And initially, we had some success. There was Rock and Green and there is, I can't recall offhand which all of them were, who were, were going to or did and then withdrew issue orders, local orders when we did. Because for the exact same concern, you know, if someone can just drive over the border and it's different, that hurts our local businesses and it also hurts our ability to contain the virus, frankly. And so we've worked with their health departments and, and tried to get them to put orders in place. And, you know, frankly, this is a little insider, but one of my frustrations has been that the Wisconsin Counties Association had an attorney who issued an opinion that scared some of the counties out of doing their own guideline. Our attorneys are very, are, are very comfortable that we have the authority to do what we're doing, but some of the smaller counties were not when they heard some of those concerns. So it's something that we continue to work on, but in this political climate, unfortunately, it's, it's become very difficult because of the kind of extreme views, you know, instead of being able to find a middle ground. But kind of a long answer to your question is, is we try, but it's been challenging.
Like I said, it was going to, not going to be an easy question to answer. So I appreciate you taking your time with us tonight and for all, for all you're doing. And the only one I, I do want, well, somebody's waving at me again. So before I get to you, Gary, I want to check with Scott Russell to see if you have any questions or comments because I know you've been very kind to your county counterparts. So Scott, do you have any questions for?
Uh, no, I don't. Thank you, Mr. Preesi, for, for speaking. I actually get to listen to you guys about two or three times a week, so, so I'm pretty caught up on most of it. But thanks for taking the time to come on tonight.
Excellent, you're welcome.
And then last, Gary, Gary Hertzberg.
I was just going to say, I know, Joe, you've always been a big supporter of trails. I mean, you worked in Wantakee Westport and that extension of the County M, the boardwalk to Governor Nelson. I just want to tell you that I've become a biker, I use it every day. The number of people that use that trail, it's really been a great, it'll be a great asset for Wantakee, the community, and it really opens up, you know, the trail environment here, so thanks for all your support.
Oh, thank you for mentioning it. I mean, I, I couldn't be more thrilled about how quickly that's coming together. Because as you recall, I mean, it was only a few years ago that we said, let's try and do this. And everyone has partnered so, you know, so well on this, on this project. And, and yeah, you're right, it's beautiful and I'm really, I'm really pleased. And I think it'll be something that will be enjoyed for a long time and be very important for recreation and transportation, especially, you know, as, as the traffic grows on M, that's for sure.
Okay, so again, thank you, Joe, and for coming on and enlightening all of us and helping our residents to understand what's going on at the county level and for us to have a better grasp and understanding of it as well. So appreciate it and you're welcome to join us anytime you'd like.
Thank you, I appreciate you taking the time and I'm, I'm happy to come back anytime if there's anything you need and I wish you all the best.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Joe.
Okay, Todd, our COVID updates.
Yeah, I'm glad Scott's on with us, touched base on some things there. Just a couple of things, I was going to mention the debate about mask wearing. It sounds like something, some, some mystery, something might be coming in terms of some county direction on that. But we have gotten a few comments and calls. I did inform the village board, but we did make a game time decision of sorts regarding the village hall office hours opening. We were, we were prepping and designing our facility to be ready for, for partial daily hours. And that was partly connected to what was going to be the need to be more accessible for absentee balloting. Effective, that would have been effective today. A court ruling, appeals court ruling, I think, changed that date for the, for the balloting to, I think, the twenty-eighth of the month. Caitlin can correct me if I'm wrong. But with that change coupled with the uptick in the COVID cases and really having been relatively successful at servicing our residents and their needs in, in different ways besides in person, we made the decision, I think the smart decision, to sit tight with keeping village halls doors closed in person, but we're still being attentive and working in other ways. So that's the only update I had. Unless there's questions about village operations, I'd be happy to turn it over to Scott.
Okay, before we turn it over to Scott, the board members, do you have any questions for Todd with regards to Village Hall? Okay, again, I, I just have one, Todd. Any, any changes within the village center or library? Are we keeping those as is or still?
Well, I know stuff, maybe Caitlin might be able to help me, she's been on a couple of emails. But I know that they're, just on an employee level, they're trying to reduce the, the overlapping of shifts. I just saw an email today from, from the, the senior center where they're trying to have fewer employee, employees overlapping in any given shift. So they're changing their, working from home to working from, from the office time. Caitlin, have you heard anything about the operating hours at the senior center or village center?
Um, no, I have not heard that they're closely monitoring the situation and haven't said that any changes as of right now. But I'm sure we have our weekly calls to department heads tomorrow, I'm sure we'll get an update then, but at this time, no changes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Scott Russell.
Um, honestly, Mr. Preesi did a pretty good job of hitting on most of my stuff. Um, as he said, that we are, we are definitely hitting quite a spike these days. This morning, they released that we're sitting at about eleven percent of tested cases are positive. The thing that we're really noticing locally here that's really got me worried are the asymptomatic positives. We've transported numerous of them now that you would never realize have them. Now more than ever, it's important to be wearing those masks when you go out, be very careful and realize that anybody that you come in contact with, just treat them as if they do have this virus. It is very serious and I think it's still, and this kind of hurts to say, but I think it's going to get worse before it gets better. I think we're in road for, for a very long few months. And then once we get into fall, really all bets are off at that point. But just stay prudent with this stuff, it's definitely not gone by any means. It's not going to be an easy summer, but we all kind of have to bear with it and get through it together. Don't go out unless you have to, again, keep your masks on. If you guys are looking for the numbers, as of today, we have twenty-four hundred and seventy-five confirmed cases in Dane County. Two hundred and twenty-seven of them have been hospitalized, thirty-two have passed away. I know that number went up again today. Um, the, the striking number is the number of positives that we have has actually tripled within the last three weeks compared to what we all thought was the, the worst of it over those first couple of months. So we're definitely getting into the worst part of it now. I think the part that I find personally the most interesting is with all these cases, we aren't seeing the hospitalizations right now that we were in the beginning, which means that it's a lot of the younger crowd, your twenties to thirties to forties that are contracting this and staying asymptomatic. So again, just, just stay cognitive, know that it's out there. Realize that you're putting yourself at risk anytime you go out. Wear your masks and, and stay safe. I don't know if Dr. Random, you have anything to kind of kick in on this? I know you work on the front lines there as well.
Yeah, we, like you said, there's been at least one death today in the, from the town area and there's multiple positives. We have more going on now than we did, like to the point Scott said, we have way more going on now than we did in the height of previous. And I, I'm not hopeful that it'll go down, I think this will just be a long first wave. And so it, it ends up being that we have to keep the, the vulnerable probably have to stay out of the way as much as they can, which is pretty discriminatory right now. You're older, get out of the way because it's here everywhere.
Well, I'll ask board members, do you have a question for, for Scott or Dr. Random, I guess, in this, since he has more knowledge than probably most of us? Do you have any questions, raise your hands? Todd?
Um, switching subjects slightly. One thing, I guess, I don't know if you call it good or not, coming out of COVID is we've got a little more public engagement. I can tell you that we have three attendees on Zoom and seventeen currently watching on Facebook. So either TV tonight's really bad or, or this system, this process of providing access to government is, is a good thing. I did want to mention though, seriously, that the village and the chamber continue to work together on how we're working to help our businesses in, in a sort of an economic recovery aspect. I know we're, we're not out of the woods as Scott shared, but we do, we do have jointly, we've jointly brought in a marketing specialist, a local Wantakee-based firm to help with some market research that we're currently doing starting this week with the business community. We're going to be sending out about five hundred emails, talking to our businesses and asking them to let us know how best to be of support to them and what things we can do as we try to rebound. So that's underway. I think there'll be more information to the board on actual actions and some programs that we'd like to initiate as part of this rebound effort, so stay tuned.
I have a question just for, for Bill and maybe you can answer my question, then you, it looks like you have a comment too. The clinic is open in Wantakee again, is that correct?
Yeah, the clinic's been open for two weeks now and I, we expect it to stay open. We will be obviously modifying the process for people coming in. And changes every week right now.
So that's good for the residents to know that it is open. The second question I had for you is, how are the hospitals right now? As far as if they're in good shape still or if they're getting overrun a little bit?
The hospitals right now are still in pretty good shape right now. The, the newer virus, I mean, again, like Scott said, it's hitting younger people. And second, it's, the newer virus may not be quite as aggressive as the, what it was when it first showed up, which is sort of the history of almost all the infections that we get. Killing your host isn't good for you, so, well, if you're the virus. So gradually, at least it looks like right now, the virus is slightly less aggressive and also hitting younger people, but it's still terror, it's still going to harm people, obviously. My, my question for Todd was, are we, because I see this going in through March or is that what we're looking at is basically support through this winter? Or is it a short, what are, how, what length of time are we gearing towards? Because my gut is this will go through the winter.
Yeah, we're, the, the plans we've discussed with the, the marketing consultant that we're working with is, is sort of looking at a plan through the end of the year. And to get creative with the way in which local merchants can share their products during the holiday shopping season. But if that's only a, a part of the mission and there's more to come, I think we stay vigilant about considering what else we can do past the end of the year. So I think the important thing for the community to know and certainly the business community that the chamber and the village are eyes wide open on, on making this a priority to address the, the local economy.
Krista Ruggie.
Yeah, and the, the group I work with that extension is in a part of a coalition of universities across the upper Midwest that work on economic. of universities across the upper Midwest that work on economic, groups of people within the universities that work on economic development. And some of the federal agencies that we're working with right now are asking us to plan on responses for the next year and a half. So through next summer and possibly the, the following fall. So not just this fall, but the following fall, realizing that even if things get back to normal, they're not going to be normal like they were a year ago. Um, so this is the long haul and, and businesses are going to need our support for a long time. That's pretty pessimistic to say, but, um, whatever we can do to support our businesses is really important.
And we're also in the, at least in the economic development area, making spending decisions differently. The, you know, that project we set aside, I don't remember what was $10,000 or some 15 maybe for studying the, to redo the, the plaza around the Chamber Depot. Well, with that project, we've suspended with the thought that those resources we may want to see used in different ways in support of our business community. So, um, we're watching those issues too.
Okay, anyone else before we move on? Scott, thank you as always for coming on and, and sharing with us. So I appreciate. Okay, next on our agenda, we have discuss and take action on resolution to grant a second extension of the declaration of emergency in the village of Wanakee and continuation of joint executive authority. Todd?
Yeah, I think Brian's going to jump on and review this resolution for the board. It certainly relates to, um, to the fact that what we're in is, is continuing. So Brian?
Sure. So if you look at pages 44 and 45 of your packet, um, this would be the second extension that we would have to the local declaration of emergency. And so we initially adopted this back in April and among other things, it's, um, uh, notes that village departments are to track their expenses related to efforts to protect the public and themselves regarding the spread of the, the virus. Um, because I think there, the hope is that at some point in time, the village may be able to recoup some of these costs. Um, in addition to that, just talks about, um, you know, that the full allocation of village resources be available to ensure, uh, village services. And then, uh, again, declares a local state of emergency and gives the village president and the village administrator some additional powers to act if something comes up essentially in between board meetings. And so we initially adopted that in April. We extended it in mid-May, um, kind of around the time when we had the case going to the Supreme Court, uh, Wisconsin Supreme Court about what the, the state's safer at home order. And, you know, it, quite frankly, in light of maybe the, some of the discussion that we've had earlier tonight at the board meeting, the thought process here is to extend this further. Um, essentially the same exact powers and then same action that was taken in April and again in May, we're not doing anything new. And, and as we said, each of those other times, this is not a safer at home order like what the state had approved and what Dane County has approved now. This is really more related to kind of administrative action to be taken internally by the village.
Okay, board members, any questions? Dr. Random?
Given that it's going to go on for a while likely, is there, is there a, I didn't, I didn't read how long this is, is this, are we doing this month to month? Are we doing this for longer periods of time?
Well, you could, if you wanted to, for example, in, in paragraph one of the, um, this second extension, it's going to go through September 7th, which is Labor Day. If you wanted this to go further, um, you certainly could. I, there was no magic to identifying that date. It's actually somewhat tied to the next agenda item for the village where there's, uh, on your agenda or resolution, uh, to, to try to help some local businesses that, as, as has been discussed earlier. Um, other communities have adopted a resolution similar to the next resolution that we have on the agenda. They had all identified, I think in their resolutions, at least the ones that I've seen them, the, the resolutions going through September 7th. So we were just kind of following a track, but we could certainly extend this further if you'd like.
To, to some extent, Bill, I, I actually don't mind it having a, you know, a modest time period started to keep, keep us, um, in tune with the village board and, and give you a chance to sort of double check the authority that's being granted, special at the moment, to make sure that there's no steps beyond your level of comfort. Um, I, I mean, if, it feels good to me that there's that level of check and balance in this.
I would concur with that 100%. I think it's good for us to have this as an ongoing thing. It's fine for us to bring it up in these meetings. Um, you guys get updates consistently. Our attorneys, Todd and myself are making sure that we're doing your, your will in essence, but there's going to be times where we have to make quick decisions based on what's going on. So I'm good with the September date as well.
That's fine. I just, I, my idea is mostly that it's very likely to go on through winters. Some mandated changes.
Okay, so we'd need a motion?
I'll move, I'll make that motion.
Erin Moran made the motion.
Yeah, motion approved the resolution to grant the second, second extension.
Thank you, Erin. Second, uh, Bill Random with the second. Any other comments? Raise your hand. Okay, Caitlin, roll call please.
Kristin Rungy?
Yes.
Bill Random?
Yes.
Chris Selner?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Erin Moran?
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Nyla Frye?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Um, next we have discuss and take action resolution allowing for the administrative approval of outdoor dining, sales and display areas for a temporary period. Brian, are you taking this first, Todd?
Well, just a real quick introduction. Um, you may have read a couple of articles that, um, communities around us are, are, have also considered Sun Prairie. Um, I think Middleton has looked at this, certainly in Madison. Um, so, uh, and this discussion came up when we had our marketing task force, this joint effort with the chamber last week or maybe two weeks ago, um, and asked whether there'd be some opportunities because actually a couple of businesses had inquired with the village about it. So I think there are some opportunities and, uh, Brian Ron should walk through how we could approach those.
Sure. So, um, if you look at, the resolution starts on page, uh, it looks like 49 of your packet. Um, this resolution that was prepared for, for you all is kind of a combination of some other, uh, resolutions that have been approved. I believe that the city of Sun Prairie approved something very similar to this. I believe that the city of Stoughton approved something very similar to this. And essentially, you know, we have language in our village code right now, for example, for outdoor dining. And if you, if you're a restaurant and you want to have outdoor dining, you need to go through the conditional use permit process. Um, and then I both also believe that there's a permitting process for, uh, outdoor sales and displays. And I think kind of the goal of, of this or, or this resolution is to acknowledge that we have a very extraordinary situation right now. Um, certainly the, the code provisions that we currently have in place make, make sense. And under normal circumstances, you, you want to be able to follow those processes. But in light of kind of the changing circumstances and in, and in light of really the need, I think Todd has mentioned it a couple of times, to help out local businesses. Essentially what this resolution does is instead of going through the conditional use permit process, let's say for outdoor dining or through other permitting processes for, um, outdoor sales or displays, it gives authority to, uh, administratively approve a number of these things. You're still going to have, uh, probably multiple department heads taking a look at it as, as part of the administrative process, but it, it, I, I think it just kind of allows for faster action by the village in an effort to help local businesses. There's, um, you know, there are still, I guess, uh, regulations within this resolution itself. In other words, there are certain things that, uh, village staff is going to have to, um, make sure is in place in order for, uh, something to be approved. And, you know, one of the things that is, is required under this is if something is approved administratively, those operations must be conducted in a manner that's consistent with any of the orders that are being issued, have been issued or are issued in the future by, uh, the Dane County Health Department. Um, the one thing that I would note is if you have, let's say you have a, a restaurant or bar that is in the village that does not have outdoor dining at this point, or that one has outdoor dining where there is alcohol that is sold and they want to expand that, anything that would impact an outdoor area regarding the sale of alcohol, um, that is still going to have to come to the village board because that really gets at the premises identified within the alcohol license itself. And that is not something that can be administratively approved. It has to come back to the village board. But that's only for, um, new outdoor areas that would, uh, serve alcohol, or if somebody has an existing outdoor area and they want to expand it beyond the premise currently identified in a license. For businesses that have already gone through this process and have already received approval of outdoor premises for their alcohol license, they're, they're in, they're in fine shape right now.
And that, that's a state statute that we can't get around regarding the alcohol license, correct, Brian?
That is correct.
Okay, board members, questions? Please raise your hand. Kristin?
Yeah, so if we did have a, an operator who sells alcohol primarily, um, does not have outdoor dining right now, how quickly could we approve something like that?
Are you saying, so, and well, if they just want to have outdoor dining where alcohol is not going to be served, if the board were to adopt this ordinance, it's something that could be done administratively.
They don't have food, like if we wanted to have them, if they wanted to sell alcohol?
Then they're going, essentially, I mean, and I, and I'll, I'm going to say something and then Caitlin, if you want to pop in, you certainly can. They, they would have to file an application with the village to get their, uh, premises within their alcohol license amended to include the area where they would like to serve. Uh, in this case, it would be outside. Um, I, there may be a posting period too. That's where I'm really kind of referring to Caitlin, but once, once those statutory steps are satisfied, then it could come to the village board.
Okay. Yep. So we have to publish, um, the application for amendment in the Wanakee Tribune. And we also have to hold the request for 14 days before we take action or issue it. We can take action before the 14 days, but we can't issue the amended premise for 14 days. Um, I am working on a, to make this simpler for our people because we know we're going to get requests for amending their alcohol license, a simplified application based off of the Verona application that we will send out when we announce this to all of our licensed operators to say, we want to make this process, process as easy as possible. Here's what we need you to do and, um, get it on the village board as soon as possible for these people.
Thank you. Yeah.
Nyla?
Can I make a comment instead of asking a question?
Yes.
Okay, ever since I received the agenda Thursday, I have been thinking about this issue. Um, on the local news Thursday evening, the secretary of W E D C said the best action for opening businesses for people to wear masks and socially distance. She said, opening business and then needing to move backwards in the plan is not in the best interest of the economy. Friday, I spoke to an employee of a restaurant bar who conveyed, conveyed it has been difficult to enforce seating arrangements indoors. He said moving seating outside may make his job more complicated. He said it's been difficult to get patrons to comply inside. What may happen outside is another story. I wonder why those working in some of the lowest paid jobs without health insurance can be expected to deal with patrons outside, many not wearing masks. What repercussions will there be for those not complying with safety or social distancing? COVID-19 has created havoc in all of our lives. We are all in this together. What one person does or doesn't do can affect many. When we lose a life, it's final. Life can't be breathed back into the dead. Life can be brought back to the economy. Those are just my thoughts. And, and I know this economically is a very, very tough time for many. Um, and there aren't any easy answers, but I just wanted to give you my thoughts.
Thanks, Nyla. Any, any other comments from board members? Raise your hands. Erin Moran?
Um, I have a question or two. Um, I guess my first one is, do any changes, like if there are restaurants or bars next to each other where they will be sharing a space? Do we have any like concerns or a plan for that? Um, and maybe that's helpful. Um, yeah.
I can answer that, Erin. Um, you can't have the same premise license to two different establishments. They have to have distinct, different outdoor spaces.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, I guess my, I'm concerned, I think this is, this could be a good thing. Um, sometimes though, if we're moving into like parking lots and the parking spaces that are closest to the establishment are the handicap accessible one. Um, I know it doesn't hear about, you know, ADA access on sidewalks maybe maintained, but, um, can we like temporarily, how would we address that?
Brian, did you catch that question?
So, um, I'm, yeah, I'm just trying to look at the resolution here because I know that there's, um, I, I know Erin about the reference to the, the sidewalk. I guess I, that's something that I think that we would have to work through within, um, I think kind of administrative approval. And my understanding is your question, if, because one of the things I know businesses have done in other communities is they have, they've, they've sought to transition their parking lot into an outdoor eating area and drinking area. The thought process being they're able to socially distance then. And is, am I correct that your concern would be to make sure that we, if, if that is done, that it doesn't negatively impact the ADA parking stalls?
Yeah, or if, I'm just thinking if it's expanding seating or, yeah, that's my question. Do we have?
I would say.
Has anyone?
I would say what I expect we'll do, Erin, when we, if we have a request, um, we'll, we'll process it as quickly as we can, but it's not going to be just stamp it and you're good to go. Um, if the boards approves the resolution, the process would involve, um, the number of village departments, including planning and engineering, um, the clerk's office, as well as the police department to review that. Um, I'll do everything I can to move things expeditiously through the process. Um, but those, addressing the issues like you just brought up and others regarding, um, just access to the business, uh, not impacting adequate parking and not impacting, um, pedestrian movements. Those are all going to be things that we're going to be concerned about and want to make sure we address.
Okay.
Dr. Random?
So I, is there a basis, is there a timeline, like a, a date, I mean, a time of night that you're stopping it? And second is, can we, is there a process where these, um, the parking spots, are they, are they, are they assigned a certain number of parking spots for the ADA? Or is that, can they just move them and not have to, and not do the specific marking that we have currently? I mean, can we have temporary marking on them?
Well, so there, there is, um, there is a time limit regarding, um, when, when you can have the outdoor dining or dining or sales, at least within the document itself. If you look at page 50 of your packet subsection E2, it says temporary outdoor dining or sales areas approved on this resolution shall be limited to operate between 7:00 AM and dusk. Um, you guys are certainly, but that's, you know, this is a draft. If, if, if that's something that you want modified, it certainly can, but that's what's identified there. Also, this, this concept of allowing these, this temporary outdoor dining sales or, or display areas that are administr, would be administratively approved under the, or, or resolution, this would end, um, after Labor Day unless, you know, to the point that you made before Dr. Random about how this is going to continue and also to Todd's point earlier about these resolutions coming back. I mean, that, that's obviously a date that could be extended if you wanted to do so based on what, what's happening in late August, early September. With respect to the parking stalls, um, my understanding is, you know, typically when you have a, a development or, or a business, they are, uh, we usually work with those businesses as to placement for the ADA stalls because you want them as near to the entrance as possible. And so I'm not exactly sure how that would play out as part of, um, as part of this from the standpoint of, you know, is the, if, if somebody is, is making a request to open a parking lot to be used for outdoor dining, in all likelihood, that's going to mean that there's not going to be any parking in that parking lot because you're not going to want cars in there at the same time as you have tables and chairs. And so exactly how that's going to impact the, the, the ADA parking is not, um, not entirely clear at this point. All I can say is that I am aware of communities, for what it's worth, that have allowed businesses to, um, essentially utilize their parking lots as, as outdoor dining areas, notwithstanding other parking issues.
I'm kind of going through my head on, you know, businesses are popping up in my head and I'm imagining their parking areas and every situation is going to be unique. Uh, certainly, you know, in, let's say Rex. Uh certainly, you know, in, let's say Rex, Rex's innkeeper has a relatively massive parking area. While others have very little. And anyway, it it's certainly going to be a case by case basis. In the in the case of um handicap access, if if we actually if that space is is utilized for outdoor dining, the thought of um alternate handicap spaces will be to provide access to that outdoor dining. Essentially, it's a new entrance to the business, I guess, is what I'm saying. So it might make sense to shift the handicap parking to accommodate the new entrance as well as those trying to make use of it. Who have who have those needs.
Other questions or comments for other board members, please raise your hand. So I have a couple then, since I haven't seen any hands. So for under section F, um the one million and two million dollars, that additional insurance they'd have over and above what they currently have? That we're requiring?
Well, I think we, this is more just to make sure that they have insurance in place at these limits that would also identify us as an additional insured, so it would not necessarily have to be in addition to what they already have.
Okay, I I just, I don't want to put a policy in that's going to be cost prohibitive. If that insurance is going to be more than they're going to be making potentially um for their business. So I didn't want to put additional requirements as far as that goes. I understand why we're doing it, but if if that's not going to make this feasible for them, it doesn't make sense for us to, you know, have that in there. So.
Yeah, Chris, if I could note one thing, the the requirement here is only if, when they apply to have this outdoor area, if it's in the public road right away or on public lands, if it's all on their private lands, they don't have any obligation to provide to do anything with respect to the insurance.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um and then next, what is the process for, we'll just say they break a rule within this. Are we talking about warnings? Are we talking about immediate? Cut them off, you know, in the event alcohol goes out in a in a spot that's not supposed to? What what? There's nothing in here really that talks about that, I don't think, that I saw. It's prohibited, but it doesn't say what's going to happen. And are we are we monitoring this by complaint or we? How are we taking care of that?
Well, I I would say this, I mean, um our our typical process and then Todd and Kevin are going to have to correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, I think it's usual that we don't go, whether it's a violation of this resolution or some other ordinance, we don't walk around and look for them. If we see it, we obviously identify it, but it's more complaint based. With respect to a viol, you know, if somebody has received some administrative approval, I I mean, I really, I think it's probably going to be depending on what the violation would be. Um if it's more of a minor one, um we, I think we want to have the flexibility to provide a warning. If it's something that's more serious, we're going to have the ability to revoke right away. And and I think we want to have that flexibility.
And can I just add, Brian, um we also have a system in place for our licensed um alcohol restaurants. It's a point system. And if they get caught serving underage in one of our um, when the police department does their different programs with them, we do issue demerits. And then those are reviewed every year annually whenever we re-up their license. So it's something that we could bring to your attention if we did have some concerns or issues with this. But we do have a process in place for for monitoring and tracking alcohol violations already.
So to be clear, I'm I'm in favor of this. I just want to make sure that we're not creating more work for the village, a lot more work for you for you as a staff, as well as putting undo things onto the businesses in order to get it initiated. So okay, so I'm assuming we need a motion.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Nyla.
Um under F, under the insurance, so then to handle the outside, um they'd have to have an additional rider, is that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Under F, the insurance, to know that they have the additional share insurance for outside space, they would have to present a, have an additional rider on their insurance. Is that correct?
Well, so what if if the 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 section F there applies if somebody is trying to have the outdoor area in a public right of way or on public lands? If they do that, then they are going to have to provide us with an endorsement indicating that we are identified as an additional named insured. That would not necessarily, however, require them to get a higher amount of insurance, but we would need that endorsement.
Okay, so is that in the form of just a letter of endorsement or is that a rider or what is that?
It's, we 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 get these, um, this is, I would the idea that we need to be named as an additional insured is is common for, for example, our public improvement agreements or our public construction agreements. And so it it is, I mean, a rider is probably one way to describe it. It's 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 an endorsement document that makes clear that we've been identified as an additional insured.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion from somebody for this?
I would make a motion to approve the extended heating capabilities uh within their in their.
There's a rec, if you want to use it, Gary, there's a recommended motion on page forty six of your packet.
Uh I don't have it up right now, so.
I could make the motion or read it too.
No, go ahead.
Okay, move to approve the resolution allowing for the administrative approval of outdoor dining sales in the play areas for a temporary period.
Okay, so motion by Erin Moran.
Second.
Second by Gary Hertzberg. Any other comments? Please raise your hand. You're seeing none. Caitlin, roll call vote, please.
Erin Moran.
Yeah.
Gary Hertzberg.
Yes.
Kristen Rungy.
Yes.
Phil Random.
Yes.
Chris Selmer.
Yes.
Bill Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Nope, haven't asked me.
Sorry, Nyla Fry.
No.
Motion passes.
Okay, so number, moving on to our next item then, number five, discuss and take action on racism, tolerance and equality in the Wannakee community. Pat, go ahead.
Yeah, we definitely want to um keep up our efforts in this area. And I think we're we're um we're making, we're making some strides at both thinking about it and doing some things. I think we've talked before about talk is talk until you put some actions into place and we're doing a few things. But we still sit at the tip of this giant iceberg. I would like some feedback, maybe to start, we we had initiated it that special meeting with the board a week or so ago as a listening session. Admittedly, this the Zoom arrangement to do that and do that well, especially for such an important topic, it's such a passionate topic. An emotional topic uh is not easy to do on Zoom. But I want to ask whether uh should, would you like to have additional sessions like that as we continue to gather input? Um or would you rather focus maybe on taking a step towards establishing some strategy on what next steps ought to be?
So I would open that up to the board members to get your feedback. I mean, that's Nyla, why don't you go first?
I would like to see us start looking for somebody um in the community who would like to um be a liaison between the board and um the citizens in the community who would like representation. It's been brought to my attention that these are very tough issues and that it's very difficult for many people to come or even voice their their thoughts at a board meeting. Um and so that's one of the things I'd like to see happen. And another thing is I would really like to see um tolerance training uh for the village staff, including the trustees. Um I think it would be very eye opening. Um I've never had a a tolerance training or anything like that. Some of you may have, but I think it would be a very positive um thing to do.
Okay, thanks, Nyla. Other board members, raise your hand, please. If you have comments. So I don't, I don't see any other hands that went up there. So everybody's quiet tonight um on this topic. I I would say that's just thinking about your comments right there, Nyla, with with regards to having a liaison um to the board. I think that person would have a difficult time, frankly, and and this is just me because I would rather have the people reach out to us as the board members. Hearing firsthand from people is a lot better than secondhand and thirdhand that you're getting because things get watered down. Maybe don't get represented as the way they really are. It puts a lot of pressure on that liaison to to be communicating somebody's feelings of passion and um their thoughts. So so to me, I think we need to make ourselves as accessible as possible. Uh if they're uncomfortable coming in front on a Zoom or in a meeting, I know that I've said it already that I'm accessible to talk with anybody at any time. I've had people reaching out to me already, um having conversations. So I I want people to feel comfortable that they can go. I don't want them to feel intimidated by a meeting setting if that's the case. But to have a liaison, I think is going to be a challenge. I I just do. I I could be wrong, and that's just my opinion on that. Outside of that, I really don't have any any thoughts at this point. Um still digesting a lot of information, a lot of things that are going on, people reaching out. You know, potentially to have groups of people that get together um and to discuss their situations. And then, once those groups get together, then come back to us with information as well. Um almost like a spokesperson for that small group, but they they're putting it down and writing and bringing it to us. So there's different ideas that are getting put towards me, I guess, is what I'm getting at. Um I don't know if you guys have been receiving those same kind of kind of emails or or phone calls, but I I'm trying to have an open mind to all different, you know, ways that we can do this. Uh I just think it'd be really difficult for one singular liaison for this. That's all.
Well, maybe if I could just hone into the initial question that I wanted to ask. And perhaps we could arrange it differently, uh but do you want to have, right? You know, as soon as possible, hold another listening session together, more public feedback. And not that we won't gather more public feedback down the road, but do you want to have a duplicate listening session right now on this singular topic? I think the one thing I'll add is that with the change you made to the to the public comment portion of the meeting now and since we're going to be having this as a recurring item, meeting after meeting, the opportunity for engagement to the board, feedback at the meetings will be relatively easy. There'll be easy access. So my question is, uh, do you want to, do you want to have another public hearing like we had before? I just, I'm.
I'm sorry.
Phil's got his hand up, so I'm going to go fill first.
I think we should keep the issue out in front of us uh and keep talking about it. Uh yes, down the road, another public listening session. But people still aren't moving around as much as we'd like them or not that they could even do it. But I think everybody in town should be a liaison with us, not just a person. Uh everybody should be willing to talk to us and maybe we could go into the newspaper, uh put our faces out in front of it and say, hey, these are the people you want to talk to. Please talk to them.
Okay, Kristen, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, um, yeah, I'd like to see us do another one. Um and and I I think that some folks may not have heard in far enough in advance to plan to participate. Or might have, might need some time to think about whether or not they participate. I'd also like us to consider when we do another public comment session, if we can take addresses of people off record. Um just knowing that there may be people who coming forward and talking about an issue for which they've already experienced some racism, um some some prejudice, perhaps maybe um, you know, you've been the 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 victim of some action. Uh to publicly declare in a recorded session their address is a, can be a pretty scary thing. Um and maybe not necessarily the best for their own personal safety. So what we're wondering if there's a way that we can record that without that literally being broadcast.
Probably, maybe maybe at least it's municipality of residents and and ended at that.
Right, Brian, if you can maybe pipe in on that, I don't know what the legalities of it are. Obviously, anybody can address our board. I know that I've always felt that um I'm representing Wannakee, the people of Wannakee. And um if we open this up for this situation, are we opening up that people from all over can address us to whatever issue it may be? And and do we have to get their address, I guess, is my question?
Well, I would say in this circumstance, you do not have to get their exact address. This is a a listening slash session slash public hearing that you are not required by law to hold and you're doing of your own discretion. And so I think you can kind of choose the rules. I would say when, you know, the normal rule is this, like, if you have a public hearing for a rezoning change, you do want to get the the address and you're certainly entitled to get it because it is significant for purposes of creating the record for the matter to find out where people are from. And specifically, are they, do they live near where that rezoning is? Uh and do they live in the village? But because this is something that you are deciding, I think you you can go without the address. Todd's suggestion actually sounded like a pretty good one to me, where you just get the the municipality. Because that way you at least know that it's uh village residents that are making the statements to you.
Okay, okay. Uh I guess we should take that up quick just to just to make a decision.
He's got a comment.
Yep, I'll get to Gary in a second. I I'm I'm okay with if they were just to say Wannakee, that they're a Wannakee resident or they're a Westport resident or whatever it might be that they're a resident from. My my only concern is some some sometimes when you hear things from people that I want to reach back out to them. So there's no way for me to communicate back because I don't know, I I don't know their information unless somehow we can get that. Uh maybe they don't want us to get back to them. I don't know that either. So it puts us in a little bit of a unknown spot, I guess. So that's just my thoughts. Garrett?
Well, on that subject, I I I feel strongly that, you know, we represent Wannakee. I'd rather have people from Wannakee. If they're going to make comments at a meeting, you know, I don't I mean, I don't really represent people from Madison or Westport or anywhere else. So I'd be more concerned that we're dealing with the residents that we represent. I think we're doing some good things at the public works level with the ADA initiatives that we're taking. So that's a, that's something that I think's in process and that's a good step. Uh I'd like staff to look at what diversity training for for the village staff, what that would cost and is there, you know, a place in the budget this year to start initiating, is that initiating that or do we have to, you know, look at next year's budget to to implement that process? But I think that's a, you know, a real good first step.
Okay.
That's something else, but I think, I mean, those are two points I thought I'd make.
How do you feel, Gary? I I should have asked Kristen to, or Kristen and Phil responded to the listening session. What do you think about listening sessions right away?
Um, you know, I'd rather, and you know what, we may be doing the Zoom thing for three, four, five months yet, but uh I always like an in-person meeting more than the Zoom. Because I think those people, in a lot of cases, they have passion and they, you know, you get a better feel for it in person, maybe the struggle that they're going through and the passion they have about, you know, that issue. So I I'd rather see it in person myself in a meeting, but I mean, we got to work around Covid, so.
Just like everything else, yes. Okay, uh Erin, I think you were putting your hand up. Was that right?
Um, yeah, I think we should have another listening session. I agree with what Kristen had said too about you know, asking people to share information. Um and we kind of talked about this earlier. Um, we're asking people to speak at a board meeting about emotional and personal issues when sometimes most likely they haven't even attended or spoken at a meeting, let alone, you know, about sidewalks or something. Um so we're asking people to really open up to us and be vulnerable. Um so as much as we can reciprocate that respect, um, I think we should. Um, I I agree that keeping on the agenda and the now our change today allows people to talk about it more. But I think another dedicated um listening session, I would be happy to attend. And hope that we can promote to get a lot of people that feel comfortable to listen and share.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Anna? Any comments? Push your mute, unmute, please. There you go.
I'm pro listening session. I learned a ton by listen, I mean, by watching the other one and obviously. And obviously, to everybody's point, there's probably more out there that we sort of scratched it, we didn't open it. And so it's a matter of when, I guess. I mean, I don't know the timing, if there's value in right away, or if there's value in follow-up after some processes, but it has to happen, obviously.
Hey, Nailah?
I think we need another listening session. I just don't know when is best. I have talked to one person on my back patio. It was a great conversation. I learned a few things, and I hope anyone watching this or listening to this will feel free to give me a call, and I will set up a meeting so we can talk. I'm open. That's why I ran to be on the board, was so that I could hear what people have to say and what they think, and go from there.
So what I'm hearing is I think people are very open to having more listening sessions, and I think that's great. It's a matter of when we would want to do this. Is it something that's a pressing thing that we want to get in as soon as possible? Generally, we have a certain months, and Todd, maybe you can put up some dates that don't have conflicts for any committee meetings, or if we have a fifth Monday, that we could put it on a Monday that we don't have a board meeting, or a planning commission meeting, or one of our others, that we can... So I think that would be what I would recommend, is get us some dates as far as when we could put this together, have another listening session.
I'll follow up with the board then on that point.
And I think everybody is, it's consistent also that the residents can reach out to us and share with us their stories. That's an important thing for us, to make sure that people know that, whether it's an email, a phone call. You know, if people want to come in and meet with me and wear masks and social distance, I'm happy to do that. That's all good. I'm not going to speak for all of you with that regard, but I'm okay with that. And, you know, that's what we are. We're supposed to be open to hear the people, from our people, our constituents, so.
It does look like August has a fifth Monday. Caitlin just sent me a message. So anyway, we'll take a look at that, and I appreciate the feedback. I do want to touch base, Chris, if I can, on a few other actions that we've taken.
Yeah, go ahead.
The, I don't know if, hopefully all of you have driven by the Be the Change wall. Have you been able to see it? Has any board member not seen it yet? Okay, I'm going to bring it. I'm going to share my screen. I'm going to bring this up because I'm really kind of, I'm proud of the community for... Whoops, that's not it. Share screen. All I want to do is, okay, here we go. All right, so this is a panoramic picture. So this is a project from the Create Wannakee Committee. Actually, Aaron chairs the committee, and it's kind of Aaron's ideal when I challenged the committee to think about ways that we could sort of do our own version of what occurred on State Street with the boarded up windows that then became canvases for creative social justice messaging. And Aaron recalled some projects similar to this, you know, community chalkboards or community response walls. And so when I talked to Bill Frederick about where we could put one up, he said, well, there's this big giant long wall along the sidewalk by the library. Perhaps you could paint that black, which is what we ended up doing. So Public Works painted this black, so I think I can move it. There we go. And I worked with a local artist, Sarah Stevens with Seller Designs. She lives here in the village, and she did this design, the Be the Change. Public Works put in this mailbox where the chalk is held. Take a chalk, leave a thought. So Sarah and some friends came down, some young ladies came down and helped paint it. And then we posed this question, racial equality means, and then opened up the canvas for conversation. And this is from probably five days ago now, four days ago maybe, and it's filled up more beyond this already. This here is also a piece of an artwork. I wonder if I can zoom in on it. No, I can't. But down here, this is a piece of artwork that Sarah also designed that directly talks about the message of George Floyd. And what we're doing now, because it's filled up as it has, I did a kind of a Q and A, or a query to the Diversity Social Media Group, and asked whether we should let it keep filling up or actually extend the black painted wall. And we, I think we're going to go out this direction with some more sections of black paint, and let it continue to fill. The thought is that what we'll do over time is consider a new question or a new theme around the notion of Be the Change. And that's been good conversation. Last week, or maybe it was the week before, I hosted a staff roundtable, and there were about 25 members of the different village departments got together on a Zoom conversation. We just talked about, let me stop this. We just talked about how we're feeling in all this, and how we felt as an employee, what we think we can do better, where should we change, and that was a good start to the work that we're doing internally with staff. And certainly, the notion of employee training was something that was of resounding resounding interest on a part of the staff who were on that roundtable. Caitlin already has the assignment as our HR manager to research training opportunities that we will look to deliver to both staff and the village board. So that research is underway. I'm personally staying connected as best I can to the social media group that's focusing on diversity. They have many hundred members already, and it's been a good place for conversation and learning. So I encourage others in the community to look for that as well. Finally, the village issued a race and inclusion survey through Polco. It's by no means a scientific survey, and by no means is that survey going to itself change a policy, but it will give us some information, and it will also help provide a baseline for where the community feels we're at now. And then hopefully, down the road, we can measure again, and hopefully find that we're making some progress. But that's going to have to involve more than just these actions, but many, many more. I know Chris and I both wrote articles for the newsletter that's coming out, I think it's later this month, on the topic too. And we will continue to have this on the board agenda. So again, we're still at the early stages. Chris and I actually spoke to a local resident who has specialized in this area of training, and she and her partner have actually, just today, I haven't been able to dig into it yet, but sent us a proposal on how they could assist us by coordinating, I think she called it, community circles, a multitude of community groups, 10 or less, that have facilitated conversations on specific topics and questions surrounding race and racial equality and racial justice. So we're at work on this. I want to assure you, the village board, that this is a matter that I probably haven't been passionate about, but am becoming more passionate about. And I'm going to continue to work and strive towards doing the right things in our organization on this. So those are things we're doing, and I hope that list is going to expand and grow. Certainly open ideas from you on other things we could be doing, but we're getting going on it. It's about time.
Okay, thanks, Todd, for those updates, and I think we're, we'll wait to see what the dates are, and we'll move forward with that next listening session as well. And I actually, we have our listening session, or I have my normal listening session this week, Wednesday. And do I have somebody joining me for this meeting? I don't, Aaron is joining me. Okay, perfect. So we will have our listening session as well. I'm sure this will be one of the topics that we'll hear from as well, so. Okay. Let's move on to our next item on the agenda then, which is, let's listen, take action on conceptual development agreement antithesis's request for Octopi expansion. So I think we're going to hear about this first, Todd, and then potentially go into closed session. Is that correct?
Yep. Isaac, boy, you've gone through the gauntlet here. Congratulations. But Isaac's the owner of Octopi, and he's going to share with you what, how things are going for their business and what they're looking at doing forward, and then likely we'll have closed session after that to discuss some specifics.
Great. Thank you all for having me. I'm going to share my screen and do a little presentation, if that's okay. One second. Oh, I think, Todd, you might have to do it.
Okay. I was wondering if that's what I look like when I'm trying to share my screen too.
Yeah.
I bet it is.
Oh.
Did you find it?
Might have sent it. Can you see it?
Oh, yep, there it is. Yep.
Okay, great. Yeah, awesome. So I'll tell you a bit about what we're doing or where we are. We've been very lucky to be here in Wannakee. It's been extremely helpful to be in a village that really helped us work out with what we wanted, our needs and our goals. And because of that, and along many other things, we've been able to grow really, really fast. So we're on our 50-year operations. We've established ourselves as one of the premier beverage co-packers in the US. In our fourth year, we've won a lot of awards. You know, we've been nominated for the Wisconsin Manufacturer of the Year, Small Business Award, won an award for Minority-Owned Business, SBA, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And the good news is that, you know, we've been very lucky that we are in an industry that is seeing a lot of growth, also post-COVID, you know, food and beverage. People are, you know, looking for more beverages, they're drinking more non-alcoholic and alcoholic drinks, and we've been able to work with that demand, which has been really good for us. And a lot of big now companies are working with us, like multinationals, because we're the easy button, they call us. We can bring a product to market in as little as 90 days, where it might take them anywhere from 18 months to 24 months if they try to do it in-house because of how slower, like, big companies move. What we're asking, and what we want to present is, we have an opportunity to, basically, we want to build a big warehouse that has a variety pack facility across the street. We already put an offer on the land that Tormack owns, which is literally the 14 acres that are across from us, and we would love to do it there. Right now, we are renting at an outside facility, a lot of square footage, and we would love to do it all in-house and be able to provide, like I said, variety packaging. And I'll go more into that for all of our clients and basically the region, which there's a lot of, a huge need, and there's a lacking demand to make variety packs right now. Going ahead, again, if you've seen us, we're in the village, in the industrial park. If you don't know who we are, we're a country, we started as a country brewery, but we evolved into a beverage co-packer. We work with really large clients and also some local clients. We specialize in all beverages, beer, wine, cider, seltzers, non-alcoholic beer, tea, coffee, and basically any beverage we can put in the bottle, a can or a keg. About right now, 40% of our production is non-alcoholic products. 60% is alcoholic, but probably next year it's going to look like 50/50. And I personally feel that the market for non-alcoholic products is going to be larger, so we're going to peer towards that in the next few years, and it's probably going to be the majority of our business going forward. We have great equipment. Every year that we've been here, we've expanded. We've been very lucky, like I said, to be able to do that. And we have a really, really advanced quality control program. And last year, we were named one of the fastest-growing private companies in the US. We're number 160 in the US, which was very surprising for us, and we're pretty happy with what we've done so far. Here's a picture of our current facility. Right now, we're in about 50,000 square foot facility. We're finishing a small expansion in the back as we speak. So a little bit of where we are, what we've done, and where we want to go. So last year, we produced about 40,000 barrels of production. We had a staff of 45 full-time employees. A year later this year, we're estimating to do about 100,000 to 110,000 barrels, which will put us in the top 25 of production facilities in the US. And we already have over 100,000, 100 full-time employees. So it's been pretty incredible to grow from six people, including me the first year, to over 100 people working at Octopi. And that's probably what my proudest achievement of how many people are part of the company. Once we hit 120,000, 150,000 barrels, which we're going to hit pretty soon, we need to expand. And some of the expansion plans that we have, the new tank farm is number one. These projects literally being completed. I think we should have our, hopefully, our permits, occupancy permits done this week or next. We're like almost done with it. We just put in the finishing touches. The second one, it's a brew house expansion. We want to start, it's also going to be in the back of our building. We would love to start it this year before the winter. It's a small building, about a 3,500, 3,700 square foot building, but it's going to house more equipment, which we're currently capacity. And the one that we want to talk about is the variety packaging facility. We would love to start the process soon. It'll all depend on if we can get TIF assistance. And we would love to start it this year. It'll probably be done at the end of next year. It's a big project. It's about a $17.5 billion investment. You know, the land and the building are the biggest ones, and we're also going to bring about 20, 25 employees once we do it. So some of the key items of this variety packaging facility, again, it's $17.5 million. We want to build a 200,000 square foot facility for Octopi and our clients. We would love to have the ability to expand if we need. I think we can fit about 400,000 to 450,000 square feet in the current land. Right now, we definitely want to start with 200, which will occupy immediately. And if business goes great, we would love to keep expanding as we've done. Again, we would love to get it started this year. If we get, if we have the ability to get it done, start it this year, we will complete it by the end of next year. And we will commit to creating 2025 jobs over the next three years. It's only going to be production people, warehouse people, some admin. And right now, why the reason why we need it, why we want it. Most of our clients right now, and very large clients, they ship their variety packing to a second facility outside us. It's a specialist facility. Their capacity, they cannot take any more clients, and our clients are asking us to do this for them. If we can do it, we would hopefully get more clients and bigger clients. This would really help us in our future growth. It's always been our plan as a long-term vision to be a full-service beverage co-packer, where people can do everything they want at Octopi, and they don't have to go anywhere else. And of course, the ask is, we ran the numbers many, many times, and there's a financial gap. We would love to request pay-as-you-go TIF assistance, like it was provided for Octopi, to make it a reality. We do have a financial gap. If the project right now, like, it's in the red, if we don't get TIF, the TIF would push it to be a break-even project that we definitely would love to invest growing Wannakee, keep growing Wannakee, and bring more employment here. Just a little bit of overview. This is the land, the 14.13 acres that we would love to purchase in the next 90 to 100 days, and in an ideal situation, start the planning stages with architectural engineering drawings, maybe do some side work on this year, but the real building would start probably next year after winter. Thank you very much.
So I suppose, Chris, see if questions for Isaac before we enter closed?
Sure. Board members, use your hand if you have any questions for Isaac. Nailah?
I'm just curious, what are your long-term plans? What's your vision for staying in Wannakee for how long? And, you know, what's your goals pertaining to that?
I would love to stay here forever. The bigger we get, the more we're grounded here in Wannakee, and there's no reason for us to move. Before I came here, I had a vision of like, if it grows X amount, you know, I can do a few of Octopi's in different places in the US, but we quickly found out that we can service the entire US and even other countries outside the US from here, from Wannakee. And our clients love that we're located in Wannakee. We're in the middle of the country. Right now, we're shipping beer to 48 states in the US and about eight countries in Europe. So there's, like, we would love to be here. No reason for us to move anywhere, as long as we're allowed and continue to grow, and the village really wants us to be here.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear.
Okay, any other board members with questions or comments to Isaac? Seeing no hands. Bill, are you awake there?
I'm awake.
Okay, I just couldn't, your head was like halfway on the screen and halfway off, so there you go. Phil, question?
Yeah, congratulations on your fantastic success. Isaac, I'm in business too, and I've had some success, but I've always had to go to the bank and... and come up with hard numbers and take care of all my loans myself. Why does this gap exist if you're doing so well? And what are you asking for from the village of Wanakee? It just, just to say you have a gap doesn't really tell me that much. What, why is there a gap when you're doing so well and you got all these customers lined up?
It's a huge project. You know, we've expanded, we've done big expansions, but nothing this size before. The bigger we get, of course, the more money we need. And right now, we don't have the money. Every month, every penny we're putting, I'm putting back into the business. We would love to do this a reality right now, instead of waiting three, four years to potentially do it. Like I said, the land is there. We would love to grow. We would love to do it now. We would like to hire people and, like I said, keep going for it. And the gap exists because even though interest rates are low, we ran the numbers and even if we rent the whole warehouse out, we do need that TIF assistance to break even because the cost of building is still pretty high. That hasn't gone down at all. So if I would could build it myself, I would do it. But um, right now, we've been bidding it out and the cost to build is, it's still pretty, it's, it hasn't moved at all.
Okay, any other board members?
So is the ask the 17 million?
No, the ask is TIF are the same thing, our tax portion. I think we were trying to calculate it. I don't know if Todd you had the numbers there, but it would be basically what the incremental taxes would be for the, for the TIF district. What's left of the, I think there's like, I believe 16 or 15 years left on the new district. It was created for Tormack. They didn't end up using it. We would love to take the opportunity to, to use what, what was already made for them.
Okay, and Gary Hertzberg?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like we're gonna, are we gonna have any comments from Ellers tonight?
I, I, I have information from Ellers that I have compiled and will share with you.
All right, because that, that's always helpful. It's great to see a business that, you know, to us, a tough question, but the one thing that Isaac has done here at least is he's got a track record that we can look at and has been very positive from the employment side in the community, which I think is, you know, very important. So, you know, great job and it'll be an interesting project. We just need to understand it.
Yeah, for sure. And like I said, I would love to answer any questions that are needed.
Okay, well, I'll just say congratulations on your success as well. Obviously, since moving here, you've done very well. Your business has done very well. Your, your employment has gone up drastically from where you started. I know that, which is great to see as part of our initiative with you and being partners. I look at us as your partner to this point, and I, I'm looking forward to seeing and hearing more from Todd and such in closed session. So. I don't have any questions.
Yeah, like, like thank you because you guys made it a reality for me when I started. Like I said, I'm just one person, but it took the village and a lot of different people to help out grow. And it's, it's still a lot of different, you know, banks and corporations and WDC, which is a state-run organization, and WBD to really help us get the vision and the goals into our reality. And not because we're doing really well. Like I said, there's, there's just enough that we have. And it's always like trying to bridge that gap to, to keep growing, like I said, and just cementing our feet really, really deep into Wanakee and hopefully stay here for the long run.
Very good. Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? Please raise your hand. Otherwise, I'm going to look for a motion to go into closed session.
I would make a motion to go into closed session.
We have a second? Second by Kristen Rungy. Caitlin, roll call vote please, and then I'll read my little sheet on about going, or am I supposed to read it before we do this? We haven't done it in a while.
You can read it right now, and then I'll do the roll call.
Okay, so the village board may convene in closed sessions authorized by Wisconsin statute 19.851E for the purpose of, purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The village board may reconvene in open session, discuss and take action on the subject matter disposed in, discussed in closed session.
Bill Random?
Yes.
Chris Zellner?
Yes.
Phil Willams?
Yes.
Aaron Moran?
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.
Mayla Fry?
Yes.
Kristen Rungy?
Yes.
We're in closed session.
And what else? Isaac, I'll certainly follow up with you. We can connect up later this week.
Perfect. Thanks so much.
And for the public watching on Facebook or here on the meeting, I want to be putting up a screen that will indicate that we're in closed session and that will return upon completion of closed session. Again, as I mentioned earlier, I don't expect there to be any action, action items as a result of closed session. I suspect we'll come out of closed session and enter into a motion to adjourn. So just, but you're welcome to stay for our return to open session, of course. And for village board members, I had emailed you instructions on how to join. So please mute both your video and your audio here on Zoom, but leave this live and then switch over to the other, the other, the other system. Phil and Bill, both of you still have your, your, your video is still shown. So if you could click that video button, it's to the right of the mute button. There you go. Thank you.
So our best people on this is probably going to be Erin and Kristin. I knew they would be the first ones to be able to get back in. So we'll see how fast the other guys are. Todd, you were pretty good too. Bill, that's a shocker.
If you want to hear anything impressive, Chris, it's that Joe Zitzelberger is still here watching.
I've seen him drive by though, I think.
Well, maybe he's on his phone.
Hey, if you're out there, Joe.
No, if you're out there. He's had practice and some long meetings.
All right, Kevin is still at the meat market.
Oh, Kevin's in my office.
All right, so we got Niall and Gary coming in.
I should be there.
I'm here.
I see Phil.
I had, I couldn't.
Oh, I see. I see, said the blind man.
There you are.
You've got seven.
Here is our last one.
Gary's here. Oh, wait. Oh, no. Oh, Gary.
There he comes. Well, maybe not.
He probably hasn't turned on the video.
You have, you have quorum still for your last action, Chris. Now, there's no.
I'm just gonna give him 30 more seconds. Only because I can see Dr. Ram now. Since he's not dark anymore. In the screen.
Well, the meeting went until dark.
I want, I might suggest that what might have happened is that his, his surface died. He may still be on as a result.
Yeah, mine is like burning hot right now. I mean, it's literally.
Okay, so let's move on. So we need a motion to come out of closed session.
Move to come out of closed session.
A second.
Motion by Bill Ram, second by Kristin Rungy. I think we can do this one just, Caitlin, go ahead. Roll bubble.
Um, Phil Williams.
Hi.
Erin Moran.
Hi.
Gary Hurstberg. Nyla Frye.
Hi.
Kristin Rungy.
Hi.
Bill Random.
Hi.
Chris Ellner.
Hi.
We're back in open session.
And I'm just gonna comment about our closed session. All I'm gonna say is that we talked about a negotiation and we will be getting more information from our staff in the future. So I'm looking for one more motion.
Move adjourned.
Motion adjourned, second by Nyla Frye. Caitlin?
Nyla Frye. Hi. Kristin Rungy.
Hi.
Bill Random.
Hi.
Chris Ellner.
Hi.
Phil Williams.
Hi.
Erin Moran.
Hi.
Gary Hurstberg.
Thanks, everybody. It's Taco Monday. I have to go eat my supper. Talk to you guys later. Thank you.
Everyone.
And you're all invited for brats on Wednesday.
I'll be there, Phil.
Thank you.
See you then.
See you then.